Karen Hamquist.
Present.
Third Vice President Karen Fisher.
Present.
Recording Secretary Linda Shelton, present. Treasurer Trevor Lake.
Yeah.
Immediate Past President Andrew Selke.
Present.
Parliamentarian Joanne Miller.
Present.
Corporate Manager Lori Plummer.
Present.
Prestige Justin Humphrey. There are nine members present.
Thank you, Linda. A quorum is present. A proposed agenda for this meeting is before you. Without objections, this will be the agenda for this meeting. Hearing no objection, this will be the agenda for the meeting. The minutes of the January 2022 Executive Committee Meeting and the electronic actions from January 30th, 2022 to July 6, 2022, have been electronically distributed to each member of this committee. Without objection, we will dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Question?
Yes, Karen. Yes, Karen.
I had noticed a couple of corrections that needed to be made in the minutes. I did not see a new copy distributed. Will they be read or should I point out those corrections?
Karen, there should be a set of minutes in front of you that was distributed since you sat down today, and that will be read here in a little bit.
See it, but I'll look again.
Thank you. Hearing no other objections, this will be the agenda for the meeting. Yeah, here are no objections. We'll dispense with the reading of the minutes. Are there any corrections to any of these minutes?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Okay. You get to read those. Okay. Here you go.
Okay, there was a correction made on the executive minutes of January 20. Somehow I left Wilson County Fairgrounds, Lebanon, Tennessee in there. Wrong place. We were at Creek Fire. And then at the very bottom, I had somehow put a date of July 24, 2021. Have no clue where that came from, but I fixed it.
Thank you, Linda.
Are there any other corrections?
Are there any other corrections? Karen, did you find those?
No, that's your own ones.
I know. I just said, and I thought, I said there was a new copy here. I don't have it. And you read the ones that I had noted that were wrong. Did you also fix the date under your name? I didn't hear that one. Okay. Sorry. Yes, and that's all corrections.
Should be a paperclip copy.
I do not have a corrected copy of these minutes.
I'll get you a set right here in a minute. Are there any further directions? Yes, Karen.
The only minutes there in this packet are... Okay, I didn't, I don't have that one. And even this one that was just given to me only contains extra minutes for the next reading. Which receives. Okay. There you go. Okay, you can have this back because that's just what I have. Now I have it. Thank you.
Welcome, Karen. Okay, the minutes are as corrected. The next item on the agenda is the report of the officers. First, the President's Report. I have nothing on the table. Hold on to the IBT. Will there be any officer reports at this time? First Vice President?
No. No, Mr. President. I'll hold on to the IBT.
Thank you, Eric. Second Vice President?
Uh, no, Mr. President.
Adrian Micah?
Oh, no, Mr. President.
Thank you. Third Vice President?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Immediate Past President?
Right now.
Thank you, Andy. At this time, I would like to ask additional members of the board with a report to present or pertinent information to share with the board. Lori Plummer?
Uh, no, Mr. President. I'll refer to the IBT.
Thank you, Lori. Justin Humphrey doesn't hear anyone else on the board? Is there correspondence to be read?
No, sir.
Thank you, Linda. No correspondence to be read. The Treasurers Reform and the IBT Meeting. There is no unfinished business. There is new business to be conducted. It is necessary for the Executive Committee to ratify the action taken since the Executive Committee meeting held on January 20, 2022. Without objections, these actions taken by the Executive Committee to approve the following be ratified. One, new logo and flag design for the Minnesota Airstream Club and the Grape and Grain Club. Two, new logo design for the Ontario Canadian Airstream Club, Region 10.
And Region 10.
And Region 10. Uh, new flag design for the Las Vegas Airstream Club, Indy Streamers Inter Club. A denial of approval of the Virtual Delegates Meeting is number four, and number five, approved new logo badges, Greater Bay Airstream Club. And number six is approved application for the Mardi Gras Galveston National Event Rally. Are there any questions? Without objection, the actions taken by the Executive Committee from January 20, 2022 through July 6, 2022 are ratified. Hearing no objections, the actions are ratified. Is there any further new business? If there is no proof of new business, this includes the Executive Committee meeting for July 2021 of 2022. The IBT Hybrid Meeting will begin at 10:30. Thank you. Break. Who has the puck control, Lori? You must answer a cell phone, do so outside of this room, in which we are currently seated for the same reason. Please also be aware of any background noise, no matter how insignificant, which may inadvertently be transmitted during the meeting and cause a disruption. As this meeting is being broadcasted live on Zoom and recorded to be posted to the YouTube later, please make sure there is, please make sure there is an appropriate background visible for the audience. This hybrid meeting will be held online via broadcast Zoom meeting. Any other recording, transmission, transmittal, or retransmittal of the International Border Trustees Meeting is not authorized. Any violation of the policy may be subject to legal or and/or disciplinary measures. The proprietary rights of our corporation, our members, need to be respected. For the start of this meeting, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Please raise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States led by International First Vice President Eric McHenry. Eric, please begin.
I am honored to present the request of the custom and privilege of citizens of the United States of America to pledge allegiance to our country's flag. We invite citizens of other countries to please stand with us and honor your country as we honor our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Eric. Please be seated. At the June, at the June 30, 2018, meeting of the International Border Trustees, the Bylaws, Article 8, Section 3, was amended to read. The proprietary seminar and IBT meeting... ...at first time have done so. A yellow card will be held up when the speaker has spoken for two minutes. When three minutes have been used by the speaker, a red card will be held up. The speaker will stop. There will be a limit of 20 minutes for discussion on each motion unless the chair extends that time. A blue card will be held up when that time has expired. If a roll call vote is necessary, the International Recording Secretary will randomly call on board members. When the chair calls for the question, only the trustees may vote. If there is no objection, these will be rules for this meeting. Hearing no objection, these are the rules for this meeting. The secretary will call the roll.
President Kai Hahn.
Present.
First Vice President Eric McHenry.
Present.
Second Vice President Herr Hamquist.
Present.
Third Vice President Karen Fisher.
Present.
Recording Secretary Linda Shelton, present. Treasurer Trevor Lake. Immediate Past President Andrew Selke.
Present.
Region 1 President Doug Hart. Region 2 President RJ Marquette.
Present.
Region 3 President Bill Wild.
Present.
Region 4 President Brad Briggs.
Present.
Region 5 President Christopher Seckelak.
Present.
Region 6 President Larry Madden.
Present.
Region 7 President Jane Carmichael.
Present.
Region 8 President Greg Badner.
Present.
Region 9 President Phil Miller.
Present.
Region 10 President Kathy Geese.
Present.
Region 11 President Ken Johansson.
Present.
Region 12 President Laverne McHenry.
Present.
Parliamentarian Joanne Miller.
Present.
Corporate Manager Lori Plummer.
Present.
Prestige Justin Humphrey. In accordance, turn your page. I report that there's... I'm sorry. Uh, Region President from Region 1 is missing.
Thank you, Linda. In accordance with the Constitution, Article 9, Border Trustees, Section 1, Item B, which states in part, "In the event a region president is unable to be present at the meeting of the Border Trustees, the next ranking region vice president shall sit with the board at that meeting as a voting member representing that region in all matters coming before the board." The First Vice President for Region 1 present.
Yes.
Please state your name.
Bart Fuller.
Please come forward and be seated.
21 present.
Thank you, Linda. A quorum is present. The agenda for this meeting is before you. Without objection, this will be the agenda.
They have a revision that was at their place.
Okay. You should have a revision that was at your place when you sat down? Okay. Hearing no objection, this will be the agenda for this meeting. Minutes of the January 20, 2022 IBT Hybrid Meeting and the minutes of the June 9, 2022 Zoom IBT Meeting have been distributed electronic to the members of this board and should be before them at this time. Minutes of the May 17, 2022 Zoom IBT Meeting have been distributed. At your place. Without objection, we dispense with the reading of the minutes. Hearing none, we will dispense with the reading of the minutes. Are there any corrections to any of these minutes? There being no corrections, the set of minutes are approved as distributed. The next item on the agenda is the report of the officers. First President's Report. I just want to welcome everybody. Heat will come down eventually. By Monday, it looks like we're going to be in the high 40s at night, just to let you know. So enjoy the heat while you have it today. And if you need anything, let any of the committees here know. We're here to make your time here a great time. So please let us know. And volunteer, we need a lot of volunteers yet. So anybody that wants to volunteer, please come out and do so. Are there any reports of the officers? First Vice President?
Uh, no, Mr. President. No one can.
Thank you, Eric. Second Vice President Herr Hamquist?
No, Mr. President. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Third Vice President Karen Fisher?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Karen. Immediate Past President Andy Selke?
I have nothing to report.
Is this where? At this time, I would like to ask if there's any additional reports from Lori Plummer, Corporate Manager?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Is there any correspondence?
No, Mr. President.
May we have the Treasurer's Report from Treasurer Trevor Lake?
Okay, Treasury Report for a period ended August 1, 21 to March 31, 2022. Uh, we received income of $798, $747, expenses of $750, $0.58, showing net income of $48,068.9. Balance sheet shows assets checking and savings of $62,842, investments of $97380, common sense for kids, $19,200. Lifetime member accounts, $117,643. Nonreciprocal and other current assets of $11926, total current assets of $1,289,001. Fixed assets less depreciation of $234,747, giving total assets of $1,052,4638. Total current liabilities, $117,910, and total equity of $1,46728, with total liabilities and equity of $1,052,4638.
Are there any questions on the Treasury Report from the board?
Thank you, Patty.
That's the EC one. You need one for the...
Thank God for Joanne Miller. Okay, ratify action taken.
No, nope. Nope. The first one we've had with the EC. This one?
Yes, yes.
All of them.
Okay, February the 2nd. Motion Number 2107, R1, Flag and Logo, Minnesota Airstream Club. March 28, 2022, Motion 2109, Logo, Ontario, Canada, Airstream Club. April 14, 2022, Motion 2108, R3, Flag and Logo, Grape and Grain Inter Club. April 20, Motion Number 2110, R1, Badge Greater Bay Area, Area Club. April 20, Delegate Virtual Meeting. April 20. Motion Number 2113, R1, Indy Streamers Flag. May 16, Number 2112, Region 10, Logo. May 21, 2022, Motion Number 2111, R2, Flag Las Vegas Airstream Club. July 6, 2022, Motion 2214, Mardi Gras Galveston Special Events Rally.
Any questions on the Executive Committee Meeting Report from the Board? The Region Vice Presidents? Executive Committee Meeting Report filed. Next will be the Report of the International Officers Electronic Voting Results. During the election of the 2022-23, international officers were conducted electronically with each WBCCI member able to cast a vote. The votes cast by the members were submitted to headquarters. Members could cast votes electronically or with a paper ballot. The voting was conducted June 5 through June 15, 2022. The total voting strength at the time of the election was 15,592 members. The total votes cast were 3,319. The percentage of members voting was 21.3%. The results of the election are as follows. Treasurer Matt Hackney had 3,102. Secretary Terry Warren had 3,115 votes. Third VP, Millie O'Donnell, had 3,045. Second VP, Karen Fisher, had 3,050. First Vice President Herr Hamquist was 3,099. International President Eric McHenry was 3,182. Congratulations to all the 2022-23 international officers. The next order of business is that of the standing committees and special committee reports. All members of this board have received electronic copies of the written reports and action items filed by each committee. The order of the standing committee reports is listed in the Bylaws, Article 3, Section 1. For those watching, these reports and motions are on AirstreamClub.org where you can refer to them. We will begin with the standing committee reports. Some committee reports include action items which will be presented with the committee report. As directed in Policy 8.6.1, Section E, IBT Votes are to be by roll call unless a request for the unanimous consent is approved. The Chair will put the question for the unanimous consent on all motions after discussion is complete. If there is no objection to unanimous consent, a roll call vote will be taken. After a motion has been passed, headquarters will make the appropriate changes to the blue book and post them. Is there a report from the Budgeting Scanning Committee?
Is possible to have a minute of summary from the...
Go ahead, Eric.
Great. So the Budget Committee for the other than just the years, Kai Hahn, I'll just skip the titles. So Herr, Karen, Trevor, Lori, and President, or Treasurer-elect Matt Hackney. They will be reviewed at the July 30 IBT, but the basic highlights are that looking at revenue and expenses that are about $983,000, a 12% year-on-year increase from year to year. It is a balanced budget. Our revenue is mainly based on membership growth. We're looking at roughly 50 members per week. Per, yeah, 50, 50 now. It's really pretty good. But it does come with a balanced budget. Some of the major things that you'll see in the budget report, which is quite significant, is that we're going to be trying to establish a reserve account. You know, we have some maintenance, some deferred maintenance on our building in Jackson City. We want to start putting some money away for it. We're going to be announcing a members benefit program for all of our members, which has the expense associated with that, and pretty much travel and everything is pretty much flat year-to-year. That's kind of a summary, but we'll go over it in depth on the 30th IBT. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? From the region officers? Thank you, Eric. John Becker, Caravan Standing Committee Chair, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to the report?
Not here.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Or from the region officers on the report that you have? From the audience? Thank you. Constitution and Bylaw Standing Committee Chair Tom Smithson, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to the report? Constitution and Bylaw Standing Committee Chair Tom Smithson, you have the committee's report, are there any additions to the report? Are there any questions from the board? The region vice presidents? From the audience? If there's no action item presented with, nope. What's that?
There is one.
We're right here? Yeah, there is one actual item present with this report. All actual items and motions are electronically distributed to the IBT members prior to the meeting. The motion form has been revised, any text from bylaws or policies that include in this motion will not be read. On the revised form, the sections are labeled exhibit. Tom, will you please read motion A entitled Clarification of Vote Count on Constitutional Amendments?
I move that all references to the executive. Wrong page, wrong page. Clarification of the vote count on constitutional amendments. I move it section two, WBCCI bylaws, Article seventeen, seventeen constitutional delegates voting need deleted in section two being.
This motion is from a committee and does not require a second. Please read your purpose, background, and financial impact statement.
Purpose slash intent, the purpose of this motion is to establish if only the actual vote, each regular member of the local club shall be reported to the vote, is the vote count of any constitutional amendment. The impact of this motion is if a regular member elects to not participate, given the opportunity to do so, as called according bylaws, Article seventeen, they have not voted and cannot be included in the vote count of the local club. Background. There has been confusion as the local club vote is to how to determine the vote on constitutional amendments. Pass by this of WBCCI was to take the percentage of the actual yes and no votes multiplied by the total membership of the local club to determine the vote to be reported at a delegate's meeting. However, most of those reported were not actual votes of regular members. Rather, a number generated from sample of the regular members who give vote. Since WBCCI has gone to one member, one vote on any issue, who in the actual votes cast are accepted. It establishes that they won under one vote by constitutional change in twenty twenty one, codified with. Financial impact, regional financial impact, WBCCI.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? Karen Fisher?
Karen Fisher, International Chairman, in addition to Section two, in addition to the. Actual votes to actually determine, I'm paraphrasing. I know of the regular members voting at a regular or special meeting called for that first purpose. My question is, can this be done only at a meeting? Or do we need to allow for the use of a written ballot, email ballot, or other electronic means of voting?
In response to your question, Mr. President. Each constitutional bylaws of local clubs contains a provision to allow for electronic or mail ballotting, and that counts as part of the forum for any meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the board? From the region vice presidents? From the audience?
Richard Gerard, International President for Foreign Management. This motion, we have a hundred plus units represented here for the delegates meeting, and come with their votes. How will affect those votes that have been valid and given to the delegates to vote by the delegates in the twenty seven?
President, may I respond?
Yes, you can, Tom, thank you.
This is simply establishing in our bylaws what has been communicated to every local club. On two separate occasions by myself and once by international headquarters in regards to. The voting of members at their local club or however they were going to vote, how they would be counted. The whole system is codified that policy which was communicated to all the local.
Anybody else in the audience? I can't hear anything. State your name and stuff.
Excuse me, Mr. President. The question is, if I may, Mr. Gerard, to ask this question about this.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, if you, President, given the delegates with a number. Unaware of what the actual, how they gathered that number. How do they vote?
Tom, can you address that?
Yes, Mr. President. In the communications which were sent to every local club president, twice by myself, communications, once from headquarters, every local club was told that they had certified the vote. I would certify that, and the simplest way to do it was minutes of a board meeting where the vote was taken. Or two, if it was taken by electronic or mail ballot, it would be certified by the board of that to the local club. I will give you an example. The Northern Californian Club, which is my home club, had an electronic ballot. I had in my possession, minutes of a board meeting, where that electronic ballot result was certified by our board. Delegate from our local club carries with them that certification, so if there are any questions about how many people actually voted or contributed to the amendment, how the vote went. If it is certified by someone.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions?
We haven't.
We have a final topic, Jordan. The question is, if the board certified a proportional voting, is it authorized to have a delegate?
Mr. President, in response to these questions, the answer is no. Proportional voting ceased in twenty twenty one. And in all the communications that were sent out by myself or by headquarters, I didn't mention specifically the role of proportional voting. It is the actual vote of the members.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? One more question.
Thank you, Mr. President, Charlie Matrow, President of Texas Gulf Coast. What is going to determine the quorum of the amount of votes in order for us to pass, percentage, twenty percent?
May I answer that?
President, the response to that question is the quorum is twenty percent of the local votes being present. And then two thirds of the, of the yay vote, or a particular member of those who voted, will approve the motion.
I understand, but as far as the total amount of votes, that how many, that's going to be twenty percent of the overall, and you understand that then would pass the, make the amendment pass?
If twenty percent of the hundred plus, you vote votes of WBCCI are in attendance, their votes will determine the passing of the protection of the amendment.
Thank you, Tom. Bill Wild?
Bill Wild, reason free. It sounds like, and I suspect that.
Your cord, you're buzzing.
Are you not, I can hear.
You're buzzing.
You're buzzing. Buzzing.
It's huge. Try another mic or better.
Try another mic.
Mic off, done, you're. Yeah, there you go, thank you.
Better?
Try that one.
I guess. Better.
Better.
It's quite possible to go to a roll call vote on some of these amendments, but that's not necessarily true for every amendment that we're going to have going forward. But it's sounding like the, the. The terminology is escaping me, the ability to represent the club, to have carte blanche, to say. Vote your conscience, that's what I'm trying to think of, thank you. The vote your conscience, each club then would have to, if they have two thirds approved before their vote, would be able to then. Do a no objection vote? I don't, I don't see us force everything to go to a roll call.
Yeah.
I'd like to answer that question. I think, I don't think, I know, what I am going to be telling the delegates is, if you have come to the delegates' meeting with some yay votes and some nay votes, you need to ask for a roll call vote. Because all of those yay votes and all of those nay votes need to be counted. Now, voting their conscience, that comes up if there are any amendments to the amendments. Because they have voted on the original amendment that you sent, you, the IBT, sent forward to the delegates. That's what was voted on in the local clubs. That is the actual vote count that these delegates have brought with them to announce at the delegates' meeting.
How will we ever have a movement to come?
To be honest with you, I don't think we're going to be able to have a no objection vote at this particular delegates' meeting on at least one of the constitutional amendments.
That's the one.
Think that'll do?
No. Crossed off, I'm just going to have to pass.
Okay, we got that ironed out? Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Richard Gerard?
That's Richard Gerard, for Foreign Management, International Club Chairman. Obviously, this amendment here is put out for the sole purpose of the vote that's going to happen in twenty seven. We have members coming in, delegates coming in, that do not know the proper procedure, but they have their vote count, and it's totally, I don't know how this is going to be enforced or anything like that. I would suggest to this board that this motion be shelved until the next IBT meeting, and at which time it probably won't even be needed. Because if motion one of the delegates meeting passes, this is all new. So to avoid confusion and conflict, and shelving this for the next IBT meeting sounds like a very.
Thank you. Tom, would you like to expand to that?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was, if it were not for the fact.
I don't know how to.
That every local club was communicated with multiple times over the last four months. On this particular issue. Possibly agree with Mr. Gerard, but every local club president communicated, they were told what was going to happen and how it was going to happen. And they were also told that the only vote that they could bring to the delegates' meeting was the actual vote of their members. And when, you know, we're not changing anything, we're simply accepting the actual vote of our members. And we, it's the original section two says the delegate to the meeting shall report the votes passed by the local club. That was, to me, was unclear in the bylaws. However, it was not unclear in the communications that were sent to local clubs. Now, one, if they didn't read those, two, if they didn't act upon them. That's a serious problem, but it's not a new one. Many times we send communications out, not only from my committee, but from others, and nothing is done with them. I have already heard a number of stories about the fact that we have local clubs that took no votes. They actually took no votes. They have no certified vote of their members. And yet they have a delegate here who's supposed to report a vote. We have a problem, this is an attempt to address that thought very clearly, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, Joe Kowalski's behind you.
Joe Kowalski, Southeastern Michigan, Airstream Club. Just to comment on what Joanne said, I know our, since I'm on the board of our club, our local club, I know both motions had yay votes and nay votes on them. I don't see how we don't have a roll call vote on both, because we need to respect those people that voted in either direction. No delegate should be voting one hundred percent, you know, that's the majority of what they're doing.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Mr. President, as a delegate supervisor, I would certainly agree with that.
Thank you, Tom.
I think we need to make sure that this is a solid exhibition of the votes undertaken by the members of the club on this.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Can I make a comment?
Head Laurie.
Lori Plummer, Corporate Manager, I just want to tag on to Tom. We started hulking club presidents with information since April eleventh. There was probably three, four weeks that would go between what HQ, we'd send from HQ, we'd send on Tom's behalf, so I am confident we, we communicated the process. Six to probably eight times to the local clubs. We would see, we would monitor some of the newsletters, and we'd see a club president say, let me know what you think, I'll vote for you. And we'd see that kind of verbiage, so we would reach out to that local club and remind them that they need to be taking an actual vote of their membership, and they are not to just wing it. So we have been trying very hard to make sure the local clubs get the voice of their members to bring those votes here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Go ahead.
Bill Martin, President, be mine, Airstream Club, I'm Bill Martin. My question is, if we have this confusion now, how are we going to resolve that all the time? I will certainly aware we're supposed to do it. Vote only vote, but it sounds like some people came with a percentage vote. And overall vote, a club has five hundred members, let's say if they vote proportional, that's going to make a big difference in the actual vote. that's going to make a big difference in the actual vote.
Number one, every delegate coming to the credentials table has been handed the sheet that says that there is a mandatory, not if you want to, a mandatory reading of the delegates which occurs before the delegates' meeting. My intention, and the intention of the parliamentarian, to make sure the delegates are here, understand exactly what potentially happens, what will happen, and what our expectations are for them. So we're trying to address that issue here with the delegates.
Thank you, Tom. This is a bylaws amendment that requires a two-third vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion clarifies that only actual votes casted by members are to be counted in determining the vote for or against any constitutional amendments. Are you ready for the question? The vote is on motion A as read. Without an objection, as motion A as read, will be approved. Oh?
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing no objection, motion A as read is approved. Bob Caldwell, Ethics and Grievance Standing Committee Chair. You have the committee report. Are there any additions to the report?
There are no additions. I do have an announcement that I'd like to make.
Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you for recognizing me. Just wanted to say that with the election of Matt Hackney, he has resigned from my committee, and I want to thank him for his service. I also would like to announce that past International President Mona Heath has agreed to join my committee, and I'm very pleased with that. Thank you. That's all I have.
You repeat that?
Could you repeat that one time, Bob?
The announcement is that with the election of Matt Hackney as treasurer, he has resigned from my committee, and I'm pleased to announce and thank him and announce that Mona Heath has agreed to join my committee as a member. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions from the board? From the region vice presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Bob, for your report. Joe Polanski, Historical Standing Committee Chair. You have the committee's report. Are there any additions to the report?
No additions or changes.
Are there any questions from the board? From the region vice presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Joe. You may be seated. Martin Adam, Information Technology Committee Chair. You have the committee's reports. Are there any additions to this report?
Yes, there is one addition. The committee would like to recommend additional guidelines.
Ask him to read action item B.
Will you read action item B for us, please?
The action item says the policy 12.4.1 of the Club Publication Section A of the Annual Membership Directory applies by adding item number eight, which would be accepted as authorized by the executive committee of the annual membership directory of the International Club and the membership directory of local and individual clubs, shall not be used by any member of the International Club for campaigning or solicitation.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you need to read the purpose, the background, and the financial impact of that.
Correct. So the purpose is to prevent the use of membership data by individual club members for the purpose of campaigning. Set as authorized by the executive committee. Background is that the policy might be a little suspicious of membership data by individuals outside the organization, but it does not apply guidelines for the progress of this data by individuals within the membership club. Solicitation by individuals should be restricted to minimize the number of applications received by our members of the club. Campaigning is to be handled by local club or reaching communications to provide equal treatment of campaigning at all positions in the process.
Thank you. Financial impact? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? I'm doing my cab region two. Just when you say campaigning, would my emails for region two rallies be a problem?
No, those are, those are-
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Region vice presidents? Audience? This is a policy amendment that requires a majority vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion proposes amending policy 12.4.1 Club Publication Section A, Annual Membership Directory, by adding guidelines to protect the membership's contact information and clarify the proper use of the WDCI membership directory data. Are you ready for the question? The vote is on motion B as read. Without an objection, motion B as read will be approved. Hearing no objection, motion B as read is approved. Rick Seepoet, Chair of the International Rally Site Standing Committee. You have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report? And I know that he's not here yet. So the board has that report in front of them. Is there any questions or concerns on that? Region vice presidents? Audience? Thank you, Rick. I'm sure you're listening. Is there a report for the International Relations Standing Committee?
Mr. President, I don't have a report, but I'd like to take a minute to comment on recent events, if I may.
Go ahead, Per.
It is with regret that we recently accepted a request from the President of WCCI Europe to hand in their charter. Their feelings were that the rules and the procedures we require them to adhere were too onerous. I suggest we rethink how we pursue the club's interests outside the United States and Canada.
Thank you, Per. Are there any questions from the board? Region officers? Audience? Thank you, Per. In compliance with bylaws, Article Three, Section Six, Page Two, the International Third Vice President elected in the odd number year shall serve a two-year term as committee chair. Karen Fisher is the Chair of the Lifetime Membership Fund Standing Committee. Is there a report for this committee?
Yes, Mr. President. I apologize that I did not get it submitted to headquarters. It's time to be included in the packet. However, it is a brief report, and I would like to read it to the board at this time.
Go ahead, Karen.
The Lifetime Membership Fund had an ending balance of adds of April 30, 2022, and of the third quarter of $117,494.43. Currently, the fund is solvent. As of July 6, 2022, there are 360 live members. The Lifetime Membership Fund Standing Committee consists of Teri Warren and myself. Teri will complete her term in the Lifetime Membership Fund Standing Committee at the end of July. I am looking for at least two additional members for this committee. If you know of anyone that is interested, please let me know. Respectfully submitted, Karen Fisher, Chair of Lifetime Membership Fund Standing Committee. And there is an attachment, which I will not read, but which I will provide with the written report, that is a copy of the statement of the account.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any questions from the board?
I'm Johansson, Region 11 President. Can you just tell us real quickly what the foundation is funding and why they're funding those? Because I know you're asking for $22 from everybody, and I'm just kind of curious.
This is the Lifetime Membership Report?
It's nothing to do with foundations.
Never mind. Thank you, Cam. From the vice presidents, any questions? From the audience? Thank you, Karen. In compliance with bylaws, Article Three, Section Seven, the International Third Vice President elected in the even number year shall serve a two-year term as committee chair. Perry Hamglass is the Chair of the Long Range Planning Standing Committee. Is there a report for this committee?
I didn't file a report, but I'd like to make a remark.
Go ahead, Per.
It has been and continues to be my recommendation that we shift long-range planning from a toothless think tank to the IBT itself. Furthermore, the club has no long-range plan. We operate year to year based on who is in office. I believe this needs to change. Stay tuned for a proposed shift in this approach in the coming years.
Any questions from the board? Vice presidents? Audience? Thank you, Per. Oh, audience, hold on. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Spinson. Jim Cox, Carolina Airstream Club. I've had some long discussions this week with some of our members on the board and otherwise with fire in their belly about our club and how we don't have any unity of planning. The Long Range Planning Committee, chartered in 2014, excuse me, 2015, is a great idea. However, what they do is recommend, and there's no audience. So thank you, Per, for giving us hope that we can have a recommendation that our IBT can think as an entire, not only government body, but a body that can think forward, thoughtfully. What can our club do to enhance retention and growth vitality? The LIP has had great ideas, but they've not nationalized. I look forward to seeing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Per. Patty Reed?
Patty Reed, former PSC president and a current member of the Long Range Planning Committee. As a member of the committee, I have to tell you that we met in the past two years, probably every other week, sometimes once a month, virtually. We had Zoom meetings, and we took this, Joanne is also a member of this team. We took this committee very seriously. We spent a lot of time agonizing over all of the suggestions that we had, and it was submitted many, many times to the executive board, but no action has ever been taken on it. So I second Per's idea that this become a part of the board so there is a long range way that is in place that we will all agree to. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Member of the Greater Los Angeles Airstream Club. I want to take this back a little bit. I'm talking on that, and I know that Patty and her committee have been working on. There was several times where we created what's called moving WDCI forward, which led to- And I would bet if we looked at subjects coming into those efforts, it would all be very similar. But it's always had one weakness, and I value Per's comment greatly. Weaknesses is execution. I would let all of you say it's a real one, put a longer plan together. Maybe you should create them. There's been a lot of creation on the way. It's the execution of all. Things like on-ramp analyzing, where it really, really good.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Go ahead, Eric.
Thanks, Per. I think in acknowledgement of this need to have a strategy that is not only well-developed, but is possible to continue from year to year, we've announced to, I believe, the board that for the first time in many, many years, if ever, we're going to be having a dedicated two- to three-day strategy planning meeting for the entire board in Jackson Center in May 2023. And Bob Wheeler, Justin, they've communicated just that we're welcome to use their facility, we're meeting in their new executive boardroom, and we'll be using that two- to three-day meeting focused just on strategy, priorities, partnerships. It won't be a rally for fun. It'll be a business meeting. People won't be flown in, the board. We've put that in the proposed budget for adoption. So that's one of the ways, I think, that to support what Per is suggesting, we bring a focused effort on strategy planning into the board that we all can agree on and communicate. Again, I think that the nice thing about doing it in Jackson Center in May of 2023 is that, you know, Bob has said he'd love to have some of the senior staff join us for part of the meeting, right? Because as we know, one of our objectives is to get stronger with Airstream. Our members have Airstreams, and Airstream, Airstream, Inc. wants our members to be, or their customers to be happy with us. And so it's in our best interest as two organizations to try to align on some priorities. And that's what we'll be talking about in May 2023. And it's my hope that those discussions can continue forward between year to year. I'm hoping that that might be a way to start addressing a more comprehensive and sustainable strategy developed by the whole board.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Per. Teri Warren, Chair of the Membership Standing Committee. You have the committee's report. Are there any additions to the report?
The only addition is an update on membership. We now have 8,769 memberships. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Karen.
Teri, thank you for all the work you've done these past few years. I think you've done an excellent job. In your report, you mentioned that Airstream Ventures Northwest provided 158 free membership to their customers who purchase Airstream. Do we know, or do we have any, do we have any data on the retention rate of those new members?
I was just looking at me. Lauren Plummer, corporate manager. We just started tracking- Lauren Palmer, Corporate Manager, we just started tracking that within our database. So yes, we would not have a canned report, but we do have an information to provide.
And the second question was, it says that there was a survey sent out, we're asking those who did not renew their membership, why not? We provided some results. How many surveys were actually sent out?
I don't. I don't have that number right in front of me, but I would guess probably around twelve hundred, twelve to thirteen hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the region officers? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Terry. Kathy Mitchell, Chair of the National Rally Standing Committee. You have the committee's report. Are there any additions to the report?
Kathy Mitchell, National Rally Chair. What we wish to like have is that recently, the Board of Officers has approved our newest National Rally. It's Mighty Bra and Galveston. And there's been one before, and we're looking forward to this one, so watch for the opening registration, which I think will be announced this week for Mighty Bra and Galveston, or Galveston, Mighty Bra.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any questions from the board?
Nice job.
Any questions of the region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Kathy, for all the hard work you've done. Is there a report from the nominating Standing Committee? There's a report from the WBCCI Foundation.
Mr. President, I would like to defer my report to the July thirty IBT meeting so that I don't give away who we are giving funds to during this round.
Thank you, Karen.
Can I ask my question?
However, if we could entertain, I would entertain a question for this, there would be a reason you allow that at this time.
Who's going to call next?
Ken Johansson.
Which is you know who. Already asked the question. I'm just curious.
We have chosen, it's kind of a three-part approach to the money that we want to give away. We have chosen five global impact partners who are currently programs or organizations that align with our mission of promoting the outdoor-oriented lifestyle. And we will give a percentage of the donations that we receive to those five donated, or to those five global impact partners. In addition, a percentage of the money that we collect will be given locally at the site of each international rally so that we can impact this area again in the outdoor-oriented lifestyle, along with the president's choice of charity. And the third way that we want to use our money is to allow, where we developed a grant process, and we haven't rolled this out yet, we hope to do that this fall, but there will be a process where a local club or a region can write a grant for a community service project that they want to promote, and we will provide matching funds up to a certain amount, depending on how much money we have, to support that effort. So we're doing it in the area of the International Rally, we're doing it globally, and then, and most of the globalists is still in the U.S. and Canada. And then also wherever your local clubs and regions are located. Separately from those Common Sense for Kids, a legacy program of WBC's, I recently came under the administration and management of the foundation. The funds were transferred to the foundation. We did receive that money. We're hoping to collect additional money here, but we have identified local charities that serve kids, and we will be making those announcements this week for those. And I hope that you will all be pleasantly surprised and excited about the money that we're able to present here in Fryburg. But again, I don't want to spoil the surprise, so. Be that the band concert Wednesday night, we will be presenting our local charity information Wednesday night. If you come to the entertainment Thursday night, we will be presenting our Common Sense for Kids on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may want to check, you mentioned grants to local clubs, you may want to check donations to see seven versus C3s.
That is part of our process. We need to know who you're giving the money to, and definitely ask to be in C3. But thank you.
Any questions from the region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Okay, at this time, we're going to take a ten-minute break. There's some cookies and coffee in the back. The restroom is located over here to our left behind us down the road a little bit, and let's be back here at eleven fifty. James Johnson, President of the Amateur Radio Inter Club. You have the Inter Club report before you. Are there any additions to this report?
Jim Cox, Member of the Wally Byam Amateur Radio Club. One addition to the report, Mr. President. We have so far over fifty licensed amateur radio operators, members of our club, of the Wally Byam Club, on grounds we expect to exceed seventy-five before the rally's over. This is typical for our international rallies. It's important because when all else fails, M-Radio.
Thank you, Jim.
About the cellphone.
Are there any questions for the board?
If something happens, I'm going to kick his butt. Okay.
The region Vice Presidents? From the audience? James, if you're listening, thank you for the report.
Park and people.
Non-Macelvy, President of the Classic Airstream Inter Club. You have the Inter Club report before you. Are there any additions to this report? Is there a report for the Future Streamers Inter Club? Is there a report for the Grapes and Grains Inter Club? Kevin Berkshire, President of the Indie Streamers Inter Club. You have the Inter Club report before you. Are there any additions to this report?
John Holly, Vice President of the Indie Streamers. Carolyn has not arrived yet, but I know that I've been receiving one or two, up to four, new members joining the Indie Streamers every day of the month for the last three months. I don't know what this, what the count is right now. We had two hundred, we probably have close to three hundred now.
That's great, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Region Vice Presidents? Audience? Okay. Lisa Sly, the President of the Vintage Airstream Club. You have the Inter Club report before you. Are there any additions to this report? Any questions from the board? The Vice Presidents? The audience? Thank you, Lisa. There is no unfinished business. There are two items of new business. There is new business to be conducted. First, it is necessary for the International Board of Trustees to ratify the actions taken since the IBT meeting held on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Without objection, the actions taken by the IBT Board since January twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, okay? Will be ratified. Approval, first one is the approval of transfer from the Common Sense for Kids Fund to supervision of the WBCCI Foundation. Second is approval of staff to develop and communicate a method for remote participation by the delegates at the Constitutional Delegates Meeting. And three is approval of remote participation for the Constitution delegates meeting. Are there any questions from the board? And the region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Are you ready for the question? Without objection, the actions taken by the IBT to approve transfer to Common Sense for Kids Fund to supervision of the WBCCI Foundation, approve staff developing and communicating a method for remote participation by the delegates at the Constitutional Delegates Meeting, approve remote participations for the Constitutional Delegates Meeting are ratified. Hearing no objections, the actions are ratified. Motion one is from Laverne McCannery, Region Twelve President, entitled Provisional Charter for the Stella Sisters Inter Club. Laverne, will you please read your motion?
Inter Clubs Approve a Provisional Charter for the Stella Sisters Inter Club.
Laverne, will you, oh, is there a second? Please read your opposed background and general impact and financial impact statement.
Stella Sisters Inter Club is designed to promote women airstreamers. Stella Sisters is open to all members of WBCCI with an emphasis on women members who tow their own airstreams or share the driving with a spouse or partner. The goal is to aid in skills development while providing adventure for women who are new to towing or traveling alone, to provide opportunities for travel, shared skill sets, tips on safe travels, and best maintenance practices while also building friendships. There is no financial impact.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? The region Vice President, oh, board, Karen, or?
Yes, the document that we have says there's attachments of constitution and bylaws. I did not see any of that stuff attached.
We don't include that.
Was that submitted to you?
Yep.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Traditionally, we do not include the bylaws and constitution. Before this motion even comes to the IBT, it's already been through constitution of bylaws, and everything's been approved. That's why we have the motion in front of us.
Thank you, Lauren.
And I understand that. I just, it said it was here, I didn't get it, so I was asking.
Any questions from the audience? Motion require majority vote in the affirmative to pass. The motion proposes granting a provisional charter to the Stella Sisters Inter Club. Are you ready for the question? The vote is now on motion one as read. Without objection, motion one will be approved. Hearing none, motion one is approved. Motion two is from Perry Hamglass, entitled Boondocker Airstream Club Inter Club Permanent Charter. Here will you read the motion?
I am moved that the WBCCI International Board of Trustees grant a permanent charter to the Boondockers Airstream Club Inter Club for WBCI policy sixteen point six point six interclubs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Red brick? Please read your purpose, background, general impact, and financial impact statement.
Purpose: Inter Clubs allow WBCCI members to share lifestyle interests such as vintage airstreams, amateur radio, et cetera. Background: Our club's roots go back to the RV days when there were no hookups to support those who wanted to go camping. Wally Byam and his followers explored many corners of the world without using regular campgrounds. In the eyes of today's campers, that was serious boondocking. Much of that carried over to the early days of WBCCI events in the U.S. and Canada. When I joined WBCCI, my home club provided detailed instructions for how to dig gopher holes. We are, we are in a different world now where camping with hookups is the norm. Mastering the art of boondocking still opens many doors to places that are otherwise inaccessible. To that end, the objectives of the boondocking streamers are to connect with and support WBCCI members who boondock, and to establish and maintain an electronic forum for fielding questions and discussing the unique challenges of boondocking. The financial impact is none.
Thank you, Perry. Are there any questions discussing concerning this motion from the board? Region Vice Presidents? The audience? This motion require majority vote in the affirmative to pass. The motion proposed granting a permanent charter to the Boondocker Airstream Club Inter Club. Are you ready for the question? The vote is now on motion two as read. Without objection, motion two will be approved. Hearing no objection, motion two is approved. Is there any further new business? Hearing none, the July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two IBT meeting is adjourned. As I have a few announcements, if I want to make some announcements, but I think, I just want to welcome everybody and have a great time, okay? We will now have announcements from the board members. Please be mindful of the time. As a visual reminder, the Chair asks that the yellow card be held up at the two-minute mark, a red card at three minutes. Let's start with Region One.
Art Fuller, Region One, welcome to the New England States and Quebec and the Maritimes. And we're just thrilled to have a rally up here in the Northeast. We thought it was going to be the coolest rally ever. So, well, anyways, just thank you, thank you for everybody that came, enjoying.
Region Two?
The only thing I'd like to say is that RJ Marquette, Region Two President, is that I'd like to announce that our Region Two rally next year will be June two to six in Niagara Falls, Ontario. We're finally getting it scheduled ahead of time.
Thank you. Region Three, Bill Vile. Region Three, Bill Wild.
Okay, I don't hear any buzz. That's a good thing. Well, we are a long way away from Region Three, which is the Southeast five states. And we have, don't know how many are here yet, but we had about 400 rigs that were signed up to make this trip, so we're real pleased about that. This is my swan song. We did a Tallahassee rally, had about 120 trailers. That was our coming out of COVID rally. There was apparently a lot of pent-up demand because we didn't know who all would be feel safe coming out, but we had 120 rigs came to Florida. We did a Hiawassee, Georgia rally, right on the lake this year. We had 125 rigs. It was in March, late March, early April, I guess, early April. It was warm when we arrived. It was beautiful weather. The next morning, it was freezing. It stayed that way through the whole rally. It was warm and beautiful the day we all drove home. I don't know why these things happen, but it's not, it doesn't just happen in Tri-Burger, it happens other places too. We had a Galax rally in 2021. There was no old fiddler convention that year, but that didn't stop them having a rally. And they still had local people come in, heard some of the band. It was a great rally. There'll be another one coming up here right after this, 8 through 13 August in Galax, Virginia. And if you still have an interest in that, I've heard there are a couple spots open. I enjoyed being on the transition team with Jenny and all of that crew. That was great. And I wanted to say thanks to Chris and Bob for everything that they've done to help support me. I couldn't have done this without them. We lost one club in Region Three during my time. Florida Springs ceased to exist, but we saw growth in all the other clubs and we are up to 1,660 big red numbers and 3,065 members. It has been my pleasure to serve as a Region Three rep, and I thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Brad Briggs, Region Four?
Brad Briggs, Region Four President. I'd like to invite everybody to the 59th Swiss Festival National Rally in Sherker Creek, Ohio. This will be the first year that Region Four has sponsored this rally. We thank the Kretowskis, who were the directors and chairman of the rally before, and Landa Lakes, who are no longer a unit anymore, who started the rally. It's the longest national rally at WBBCCI, and we're very proud that we can continue that. I also would like to take a moment to ask Lori a question. You and I had emailed back and forth on the 8th of July about getting motions to this membership so we could have the officers forum, and you thought at best we could get it the day before. And we really didn't get these documents until less than 48 hours before this meeting. Can we work on getting these sooner?
Sure, absolutely. I apologize, but Joanne became ill. And that's why we were not able to pull everything together.
Okay.
So, our standard should be two weeks prior to the meeting, but as everybody knows, sometimes you can't prevent illness or other things that get in the way.
Thank you. I also have a comment. I would like to find how the decision was made for the headquarters to take over the rally direction of the international rally. The international rally is an event that only about 10% to 15% of our members take advantage of. We're using resources in the headquarters to run this rally, and I'd like an answer, not at this moment, but somewhere, how this decision came about.
I'll be happy to comment on it. Actually, we started this process several years ago, and I know this is my eighth rally that I've been involved in, and headquarters has always done the, has done way more than what most people know that we do anyway. So, actually, I can't even tell you what we're adding to what we've already done in the past. The only thing that I can see and one of the great improvements is lessening the layers. So, I can give you an example of what happens a lot of times. We have a committee chair that doesn't know what's going on. They'll call headquarters. We ask that committee chair to call their team leader. They call the team leader. Then the team leader calls us to ask us what's going on. And then, so we explain to the team leader, and the team leader calls that committee chair back, and the committee chair calls us back anyway. So, that includes a lot of the things, like we've always done the invitations, we've always have done the registrations, we've always had done multiple things. So, I think what, prior to you is when we started to make the transition, and that was coming from the EC, and the goal was so that the EC members did not have to worry about the rally and they could focus actually on club business instead of what is entertaining 10 to 12%, 12% of our membership.
So, we have, we have a standing committee that plans the international rally. I would like to see that we continue with that so it's member-driven and HQ-supported. Right now, we went from a volunteer rally manager to a paid rally manager.
I get paid. There's no change. There's no change in actually the way things have been happening.
Well, we're supposed to call Chris if we have a problem, or we used to call him.
No, sir, you're not. You're supposed to call me.
Well, okay. We have a rally manager that was volunteer up until a year and a half ago or so, and now we call you who's a paid employee.
Okay. Well, before, I mean, the rally manager was for 2018, 2019, and 21. So, three years. I've been part of the management team for eight years with the rally, and really, there is no difference.
Again, I think it should be member-driven and HQ-supported.
Okay, of course, we can discuss this more. I don't think this was supposed to be...
Time's up, and this is what you...
Yeah, this wasn't supposed to be...
Let's move on to something else right now. Thank you.
Anything else, Brad Briggs, on your region? Okay. Christopher Seplex?
Okay. Well, I'll let Artie discuss his rally next time. I'll do a general overview. It's September 14th through 18th in Madison, Indiana. It's me being in Madison too, so I'll let him talk since this is my swan song too, so you don't give me a microphone. I want to thank everybody on this board. It's been great working with you, even though we don't agree on everything. You know, I understand everything that goes on. I want to thank Jenny for having me on her special board. Thank you. I want to thank all my support team on my region. Damon Beals is my computer guy. If we have any problems with the computer, we just go straight to him. So, I want to thank Damon. I know our region's going to be in well, good hands with Artie Martin and John.
See you again.
Deal. Thank you. Thank you. I'm drawing a blank here. I want to make a special thank you to Susan and John Swarregill. They have become our best friends here in the club, and I know I couldn't have done it without them. If you're listening, you too, thank you. And one last person is my wife, who puts up with me all the time, and I know we've gotten into fights, but thank you, Nancy, on the record. So, I know she's out somewhere working her tail off for Region Three, so thank you, and we get to do whatever we want next year, so thank you. So, thank you, and Christopher.
Now, I'm in trouble because I didn't list my wife.
Go ahead, Larry. Jane Carmichael.
Don't give me a mic.
Okay, let's get through it then.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Greg. I'm going to miss you. Region Seven has had a good year. We've brought up a secretary, become a Region Second Vice President, and then a First Vice President. And in a week, Ginger will be Region Seven President. Are we good? I've been blessed to have the Region Seven office for the last couple of years, but for nine years, I've been an officer in this group in one way or another, whether it was a club or the region. And I don't mind turning it over one bit. I have, I've been able to reactivate the Region Seven newsletter, promote communication among our three clubs, educate, educate, listen, listen, re-educate, and enjoy meeting so many of the Region Seven folks. We were able to double our travel budget. We've done some, thank you, Randy, kind of. We've had some, we've had some very interesting rallies, and last year, we had a pretty good region rally, and our sponsor, the Nature and Me RV, Travel City, an airstream, Northern Michigan Airstream, spent about two grand to food everyone. I was also happy that Ty Mont arrived and Karen Fisher and Lori Kimmel arrived to help make that an even more special Region Seven rally. We haven't had international officers who dared to come up that far. I thank everybody. I, again, am not leaving a very big hole. It'll be filled very easily. Things are in good order.
Greg Vedner, Region Eight. And in April, we had our coming out of COVID rally in Lincoln, Nebraska. We had a wonderful time. I think it was a little bit smaller crowd than we're used to, but everybody had wonderful time. Thanks to Linda Sheldon for coming and adding a bit of humor, and I didn't want to run into a spot with an impromptu speech, which she handled gracefully.
Oh, yeah.
So, we had a terrific time. Thanks to everyone for putting that on. Next year will be a little bit unique for our region. We'll be in the middle of nowhere in northeast Kansas at a ranch RV park, and we've got exclusive use of that park for the entire rally, so we'll be the only one in the park. And it's just going to be tremendous. We'll have information about that on the website. So, thanks to everyone. It's been a great year.
Thank you. Phil Miller, Region Nine. This is my swan song as well. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent Region Nine. I don't have a whole lot more to say. I'll let Nancy do that at the next IBT meeting.
I'm sure you wanted to thank Joanne here for being with us for all this, right?
Go ahead, Kathy. I am Kathy Geese, President of Region Ten, and I empathize with Ginger. I rocketed from missing a meeting to becoming the president. This is my first international rally to attend, and I thank everybody, particularly Lori Plummer, for her patience with me. Region Ten currently has seven clubs, British Columbia, Alberta, Saskatchewan, Montana, Idaho, inland, northwest, Washington State, and Oregon. We have one of the largest geographical areas for a region in the United States, and in the past year, we had, well, in this camping season, you had about 70 rallies, which I think is phenomenal. We have several up-and-coming clubs that are growing like crazy, which is really good. We also are the host of two national rallies, the Pendleton Roundup, which is in Pendleton, Oregon, every year, and then the Sun Valley Jazz Festival, which the Caldwell's host. And we have, Washington State is working on reinstating a national rally called the Potlatch Rally that was very successful for many years and just kind of died on the vine. We're also very excited. We have gotten some interest from Alaska to add a club up there. I will be flying to Alaska versus driving. Bless all of you who drive that one. We just completed our first international rally, region rally, in four years. It was up by the US-Canadian border in Washington State. It was canceled twice because of COVID concerns of our members. We were very honored to have an incoming international president, Eric McHenry, attending. We were also honored to have a region president, Laverne McHenry, and we also were honored to have an incoming international secretary, Terry Warren. So, we had really nice attendance. We sold out that rally, and I think it was something like 26 hours. So, that was pretty nice. Airstream Adventures Northwest donated $15,000. Oh, I got the yellow card. I think that means... Wrap it up. Wrap it up. So, as I've said, we have had a very successful camping season. We have a lot of active members, and I want to thank everybody that helped me rebuild the Board this year.
Thank you, Kathy.
Region Eleven, President, Arizona, Colorado, Utah, Wyoming, New Mexico, West Texas. We've had a busy year. We've had a great region rally back in March. We've almost lost Wyoming and New Mexico, but Wyoming is coming back. New Mexico, Lisa Sly, has agreed to be the president of that. I think that's, she's going to do a great job. There isn't anybody that sits at this table without the support of many people, so I want to make sure that I thank all of the regions, all of the members in Region Eleven. And over the years, I've been a member for 25 years, and I've done some kind of crazy things, and there are some folks that I, that I need to thank over the years that have been, that are kind of with me, that are in attendance. Richard Gerard has been with me through forming units and rallies. Lisa Sly with Balloon Fiesta, Jim and Linda Polk, who were with me in the very beginning when we started Balloon Fiesta, and many, many more who I'm failing to mention. And in particular, I would like to thank Stephen Parr and John Holly, who have been, Also, would like to thank Barbara Actor, our secretary, Carolyn Bertschier, our webmaster, Nancy Fisher, our treasurer, and now incoming, I'm pleased to hand over my reins to Stephen Parr, and a new member of our Region, Julia Cook. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Laverne.
Oh, sorry.
Laverne McHenry, Region 12. Some of you may know, Eric and I are on a three-month trip. You can see our antics on video. We need to get back to California September 15th through the 18th. We are having our region rally at the San Diego, Mississippi Bay. We will have front row seats to the Bay Fair Boat Races. It's a four-day dry camping event. We're really looking forward to this. I've not attended, this is the second time.
Um, I've not attended, this is the second time, uh, we are having a rally there. We hope to make this, uh, going forward, we hope to make this a, a national event. So we're, we're looking forward to that. Uh, we're also just coming off our, what I call magical Cali rally. And again, uh, the folks do such an amazing job. We, uh, it had been canceled for two years, and we still did a phenomenal, and as I said, magical rally. It's, it's held at B6 Ranch. It's, uh, no internet, nothing there. It's, it's, uh, it's a, I, I believe the population of the town is 18 or 19, something like that. We, actually, the folks did a rally with a two-year-old budget, which is something I, I recommend you never, ever do. So, and, and they still pulled it off. It was still phenomenal. Uh, so I, I thank the folks from the bottom of my heart. It was, it was beautiful. So in two years, we'll do that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to, let's move down on this end here. Andy?
This is my last time to sit up at this table, but I'm looking forward to being on the podium. It's been a fun one. Uh, I think back of all the people that have stepped up to the plate and done things over the years and helping systems come and grow. And, uh, with great rallies and whatnot. I just thank all the friends that I have made over the years visiting people. And, uh, it's, it's been a fun run, but I look forward to still being involved and helping with things. But I will enjoy not going to all these meetings all the time.
Thank you, Andy. Lori?
Uh, Lori Plummer, Corporate Manager. I just wanted to point out, in case you guys have not noticed, on the website in the Members Only section, uh, over the last several months, if you go into your membership information, you are able to join clubs as affiliates. You're also able to join enter clubs, which is probably why indie streamers are seeing this fight. Amanda's not sitting here with me, but she can tell you both of those are there, and, and people are excited to, to join the other uh, enter clubs and, and things so that they can learn more about the, the club in general. So that's one of the things. And then we have some other membership things coming forward, um, on the website. And we will be announcing that stuff soon. I'll be getting that information out.
Lori, can you do that even if you're not doing a renewal on your primary membership?
Yes, you can do it mid, you can do it mid-year. Yeah. So obviously during the renewal season, um, we have launched, uh, you'll see this next season auto-renewal. We also did just launch that. We've had so many things going on. Um, but if you wanted to join as an affiliate or an enter club with non-renewal, go to your membership information. You can do that off-season as well. So that's just a touch of what's been happening. Thank you.
This is also my swan song. And I'd like to thank everybody that's helped me over the past year, the office in particular, comrades up front here. And, uh, I guess perhaps I still have a wife. She's been, uh, on her own, running around, uh, dog sitting and whatever. Um, so she's found her legs outside of here while I've been doing all this stuff. So maybe I don't have a wife anymore. That's it.
Well, after two years, I'm sure you realize that Bill is a man of few words. Not my problem, though, and I think you know that, too. Anyway, I have enjoyed serving with Ty as his parliamentarian and working with the region presidents and the region officers to, uh, help them answer any questions or clarify things for them. I will be continuing in this position for Eric and look forward to working with the new board. And thank you to my husband for supporting me.
Bing, y'all.
We'll have beer later and get over that. Here's Linda.
There's going to be a whole lot of swans up here, so after this is all over, I expect us all to get together and do a dance. Okay, where do I begin?
Few minutes, short.
Okay. The reason I'm even sitting here at this table is Mona and Barb. They gave my name to this man, and he had no clue what he was getting into. I've been in the club for 24 years. My parents were here before. I love this club, and Chris, you're going to make me cry. I just hope that I've made people proud, especially my friends and my family. And I hope that y'all are proud of what I've done up here. And, um, gonna miss being up here for about 5.2 seconds. Thank you very much. I love you, Ty.
Go to Karen first.
Thank you, Ty. Um, I want to thank everyone who has supported me this first year on the, um, EC, um, who've talked to me, shared their thoughts with me, uh, sent me emails, answered questions if I was looking for information. Uh, I appreciate your support, and I look forward to having your continued support as, uh, I start this next year. Uh, I was fortunate enough to attend the Region Three rally in, uh, at, in Georgia, and the Region Nine rally in Mineola, Texas. Again, both of you, thank you for welcoming me and making me feel a real part of your, your group. And to all of your members who, who've talked to me and shared concerns, questions, whatever. I, I enjoyed meeting so many of you. And it's been so cool to come back here to those that are here, and they come up and they're, "Hi Karen, we're so glad you're here, and we're glad to be here." And it's so, it's great that they remember me better than I sometimes remember them, and I apologize for that. But, um, it has been a, a great learning experience this year being on the EC as opposed to just being a region officer, and I've enjoyed all my time. Thank you.
I care a great deal about this club. You are my extended family. Um, working with the IPT, EC, and HQ Headquarters has been very satisfying. Uh, communication has become easier and more frequent. Feels good to be moving away from twice a year big bangs of the summer and winter IPTs. It is my perception that the club has become increasingly open to change, some very long overdue. I am happy to be part of this change process. I'm optimistic that the changes we're making is making us more appealing to all airstream RV owners, not just those in the club. Big shout out to my wife Lily for providing backup support. Thank you, everyone.
Eric?
Thanks. I, I could just say over and over how joyful it is to serve with y'all. You know, I think that a lot of us are at a stage in our life where we're able to choose where we spend our time and our energy, and we choose to spend it here with our colleagues, with our friends out there. So it's absolutely wonderful. It's been a great year for Laverne and me. Um, we've been to four, we've been across the country, I don't know, two or three times, I guess, covered in Ty's stuff and Andy's stuff or whatever, you know. We, this last year, we've been Intact, Marshall Laney Harbor, Pinewood, Minnesota. And every place we go, and this should not surprise any of us, but it still does. We are welcome with open arms. And, you know, when people talk about why did mine airstream, we talk about, oh, beautiful the trailers are and all this stuff. But really, it really is all about all those people out there. So it's been a pleasure and honor. Um, I did want to share a couple of things, though. As we're starting to work on 2023 rally, Laverne and her team are doing a fantastic job. Uh, to your point, Brad, um, they're on the agenda for the August 3rd IPT, and then starts August 3rd EC, and then the August 18th IBC. IPT are already a, a place for Lori to talk through roles, responsibility for the national rallies. Right? So typically, I would not like to have this be a surprise, but there are dedicated times on the agenda. If you look at the board report, and you see it posted already, and the Corporate Manager Report, higher responsibilities, stuff like that. So we'll be doing a deep dive on that on August 3rd with the EC, and August 18th with the, with the full board. One thing I do want to share, though, is that to get our rally balanced for 2023, uh, we included funding of Lori's team. You know, I think none of us want to fund Headquarters, um, on things 10% of our members go to. So I think we funded one FD or one person headcount, 45,000 of her teams onto the 2023 rally budget. We still have a good price compared to typical rallies. So that is funded by the rally. It's not funded by general members. We're really conscious about that, conscious about that. Um, a couple of the quick things I do want the board to know, thank you, is that, because you'll, I don't want you to be surprised, but we have a chance to talk about it. When registration opens for 2023, we're trying something different. When every member out there registered, they will be able to pick their arrival date. And I can go into details later. It actually is better for our budget, it turns out. But they will be able to pick whether they arrive on Saturday, or whether they arrive on Friday, Thursday, or Wednesday, day for mental costs. So that would be a good thing we're trying to. The last thing is that Laverne and I are serving on the RAP team, Larry's, uh, Larry's RAP team. You see, it's the Orange House. We've been parking in parking lines and stuff. And I think if any of you have the chance to serve, volunteer for a rally, come out early, serve on a team, help stuff envelopes, help paint lines in the ground, set up buildings, set up electrical, and, you know, as some of us 30Ps know, with the path, it's a heck of a lot of work. And I would encourage all board members to, to do that. I think that's where our members would love to see us contribute, as well as walking around and listening. Also, there'll be no business meetings in 2023 rally.
Okay, then. I got a few words, but not very many, so don't worry. Um, a few people I want to thank, Mona Heath, Annie Selking. We only knew what Barb knew before she left us. She told us we'd be good friends, and we'd do things together, never realizing that we'd be three international officers right now. But, um, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the sound crew. I want to thank the Parkers. I want to thank everybody for being here. This is not my swan song. I'm not leaving yet. This rally's still got a ways to go yet. We'll be all set. And I guess John Holly, you've already had three minutes. John Holly needs to make a speech.
Now that I have you all here, I just wanted to remind you, at nine o'clock tomorrow morning, I'll see you all here for the rehearsal for the opening ceremony that is at 11 o'clock on Saturday. Jenny Sutter and I are going to try and get through this in an hour. However, we have to line all the clubs up. 96 clubs are here. But we need to get the names of all the flag bearers that are actually carrying the flags across. So, uh, bear with us. Hopefully, it won't take more than an hour, maybe an hour and a half. So I'll see you all at 9:00 AM, and we'll talk it through. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Everybody have a great time. Enjoy the rally, and we will see the people at rehearsal tomorrow morning. Thank you.